Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you lead us in the perp please?
Yes.
I'd like to have everyone by their heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the glorious weather that you've been giving us lately in our area here. We thank you for the rain when it's been needed. We pray that you watch out for those areas where the rain has been lacking, that they too can have what they need to make for a successful year in their crops and everything like that. We pray that you watch over the activities this evening, that they may be pleasing to you. We thank and praise you for all the activities and items that we have in our community that make this a great place to live. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. Okay, reading and approval of minutes from July 3rd, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
And second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, 5A, engineers report. Jared, you're up.
All right. Thank you. We have a little bit longer here tonight, so I have a little presentation for you guys on the sanitary sewer televising. Okay, so what I've got generally is five things going on. Number one is a water project. Again, we have funding source of state water commission, three construction contracts tonight. Just gonna give you an update on two of them, and I want to close out one of those three contracts with DN TAN, TAN contractor. So, TAN has been finishing up punchless items. They're the ones that were running the asphalt patching, the concrete repair work through, some recrues and change orders within the last meeting that I was here. They're doing that work, I don't have a payment for them. I have looked at some of the concrete working on, but Winkler's been doing this. So, just an update there. I think generally the punchless items remain are related to kind of seeding, drive up through the right side of the north side of town. It's a lot of weeds right now, and there's not a lot we can do right at the moment when you do reseeding. Our specs don't allow us to do that between now and about the 10th of August. We make them do that after that time, so we're probably not going to see much change. Probably won't be any change till next meeting. We're going to try and close that project out. That'll probably be in September or August. DN tanks, so we have final balancing change order and final payment application. If you look here, final balancing change order is a contract reduction of $688.07. It basically means that the bid amount, the final constructed amount, about $688.07 less than the bid amount, so we actually have to, according to the funding agency rules, we have to do a negative $688.07 change order so that the contract matches the exact as constructed amount. So, I would recommend approval of final balancing contract change order, the amount of negative $688.07 and 70 cents.
Okay.
And then final, sorry, and then final payment application. So, it's contractor's application prepaid number eight, $33,905 brings them up to complete on the tank out there.
Do we want to address this now? Or just before we move on?
We go ahead and make it just a single motion for the DDO and the final payment, approve the change order and the pay. We'll make that motion?
I'll second that.
A motion by Pillar and a second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Paul and Alan.
Aye.
Motion cured.
All right, so the next thing I have is expedition to states. Obviously, the subdivision on the southwest side of town, the city is not the direct party to this, obviously, but we are taking over the infrastructure when they are done. So generally, just an update on construction here. Williams Building Company is doing that work themselves. They've hired local people to help them. They're replacing sewer at the moment. As the sewer goes, we're doing a lot of material testing out there, and that was one of the big problems from originally, is that there were compaction, everything, soil consolidated, crush the pipe, undermine the road. So, generally, we're inspecting, Bronn InterTech is out there doing the third-party quality testing. I have copied the city on emails, their tests are all in order. Bronn InterTech, they sent an email just recently, that said there's a huge difference between the compaction that they had before and what they have now. Most, mostly related to moisture. So, they're at optimum moisture right now, which in our world is a big deal. You cannot get compaction if you're too high or you're too low. They have to be within, I think, a 1% tolerance of, Grant's chicken said yes, of moisture. So, they're doing a phenomenal job with compaction. I'll just tell you, what they did tell me is, with the gravel loop, they do not plan to pave that until next year. Anything that disturbs in front of people's homes out there, they do plan to pave, but I was actually happy with that. I thought that was a good idea. They know that if they are asking for building permits and they are building, they'll be dealing with mud and a mess out there, that's kind of their own problem. But if you let things go through a freeze-thaw cycle before paving, it's generally a good idea. So, that is their intention now. It wasn't before, but I think they've talked about it internally and they plan to do that. So, just so you know. Capital improvement plan, you guys asked us to do that amendment last month. No, no action on that yet. They haven't really done any work on it just yet. Alley behind Union State Bank, Jerry asked me to mention that. There's an alley just off Main Street Block, half a block north, that's in very bad condition, and we've done an opinion of cost on that. And generally, there's two ways to do things. I think on the last one, we asked those people if they wanted to see those improvements, we asked them to petition for them. And I think we're probably above that point if they want to see that work. It's probably too late to do it this year, I think, but if they want to see it next year, we could take that estimate and divide it up appropriately and give them the option to do that. So, it would be about a 300-foot stretch of alley. Last time, the assessment district was just the people on that block. Sorry. Okay, cool. So, we're to that point where we've looked at it, we have an opinion of cost. I can help Monty with a little more breakdown of cost per user. I think we have a special assessment, can we look at it last time?
No, we just did it on the per square foot.
Okay, okay. But we're to that point, I think, now after looking at it, to feel comfortable with that estimate, so. Any questions on that?
No, no, but the difference between the one we found behind Mr. Turner's is that we have a manhole that needs retention in this alley, and also our own parking lot that we have. So, there's going to be, the city will have more skin in the game than it did last, last month.
Yeah, so it's like $110,000 total alley is where our estimate is right now. So, yeah, you guys would be one of the numbers, a special assessment.
Are you having conversations with some of the business owners there as well? I know some of them have parking lot type areas back there, and if they're looking to make an investment at this point in the alleyway, maybe they would want to consider if there's just going to be a per square foot cost.
Okay.
I get why you're having that conversation.
That's a good idea.
It's a really good idea, though. Really good idea.
Yeah, some are gravel, some are scoria, some are dirt.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we take that cost estimate grant, and we'll just draw a bigger swath through there and try and give them an idea what it'll cost to just do the whole thing. But it may be their choice, it's the time to do it, so.
Yeah, the only way, I guess I would look at it from, you know, digging that up, but then, you know, Union State Bank's got a pretty good space back there, and I think that the furniture store has a space back there that they park some of their vehicles and...
Union State just concrete dollars last summer.
Did they finish it all up? Okay, okay. May talk, just run that by you two, if we get out of the city right away if we should do that or not, I'm not sure, but yes, we can figure that out.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Last thing then is sanitary sewer, so. Mr. Earhart, we did, so I'll just kind of go through this, but what we generally have is, well, I'll just go through this. Sorry. Y'all know who we are. We're doing a lot of these actually right now, assessments and reports on sanitary sewer systems throughout the state because there is this rebate for you guys to do the work. So, for those that don't know, we are more engineering, four-foot, ninety-six, and we can go to, you know, a hundred and some, a hundred and twenty, I don't know where it is, across the third region, but. So, in January, we put together your updated capital improvement plan list, and that had, you know, thirty-some projects that needed to be done across the city, and not all right now, obviously, but number one on the list was to evaluate the sanitary sewer system, see the remaining clay pipes, to see what condition they were in. So, you guys sought and got a par grant to do that. So, that, that was accepted. You guys got bids to do the cleaning and televising, that was done this summer. Just to talk in front of the taxpayers, that was almost a 90% grant, or maybe an 80% grant, you know, sixty-five thousand bucks a year, the cost was thirty-seven hundred. It's a good deal. You guys have the tapes now, we have the tapes, we have a report, but without us looking at them and giving you some ideas and options, it's a limited value, so. Next slide, Monty. Within our facility plan, which is the, what are you laughing about? Within the facility plan, which is the deliverable to the health department, it has all these, these items, and that 20-page document is just broken down in this PowerPoint presentation here, I can't share what's going on. So, you've got, go back one step, you've got about 250 blocks of sewer mains, about two-thirds of them are PVC, and about one-third of them are clay. And this shows the distribution between the different sizes of pipe throughout town. A lot of eight-inch pipe, which is the minimum size sewer main that you're supposed to have as a public system. You guys had a capacity study done in 2012, and said that eight inches is pretty much appropriate for every spot in town, other than some trunk mains. So, you shouldn't be concerned by that, it just shows that everything's property size. So, clay pipe, this slide just generally shows the problems that clay pipes have, and then the subsequent slides are going to show you what we found in your system, which is pretty much exactly what all clay pipes have. So, what we see a lot of is roots, clay pipes, this is just an example, this is not from Hazen. They're three- to four-foot chunks of pipe that are just kind of pushed together. They were the standard building material of the tens, the twenties, the thirties, the forties, the fifties, up until PVC pipe, clay was the material of choice. And they generally have the same issues. Clay pipe is a rigid pipe, it's not flexible, so as the ground moves, the clay pipe moves. So, we've got root intrusions, we've got broken pipe come from being rigid, they crack sometimes just right away during installation, they crack, tend to move. Bellies, bellies are when, you know, it sinks at that location, also known as sags. We do have some sags in your system, and then collapses. Thank, we don't have any collapses, but these, those are just the general ideas for the conditions you can experience. What we found from watching the blocks of sewer televising is that these are the, this is kind of the summer, then I'll give you some photos, about 12 locations where spot repairs are needed. They're not all dig up and spot repairs, some of them can be done trenchless. They will take some more extensive cleaning before that can be done, but we identify those locations where those spot repairs need to be done, which is a good thing. Those generally are because of broken pipes, heavy root intrusion, and then sags. And then protruding taps. So, protruding taps, they're not an issue to you as long as they're not blocking the invert of the pipe or the flow of the system. Where they get to be a problem is if you're going to line the pipe. So, when you get to a point where you want to install a cure-in-place liner, which is what a ton of cities are doing, you need to have those protruding taps cut off, and they can do that as a part of those lining projects. They can do remotely, or remote control wise, you don't have to dig those up, it's just something of note that when you do plan a lining type of project, you need to build that into the budget to do that, or else you'll get a thing for a change order later. Okay, so, the next four or five photos are just some screenshots. A lot of times we see roots in the form of just grass. Those are, those are kind of, your system was jetted out before it was televised, so those are all gone. The roots now that I'm going to show, these are the heavy tree roots. These can't just be broken off by sewer jet, these need to actually have some cutter go in and kind of re-meets out. I often use a chain cutter to do that. That's just a few of the photos, you know. And then once that work is done, those spots at a minimum should get a spot repair, like a trenchless spot repair, depending on what they look like after the roots are cleaned out of those spots. The assumption is that they can be done that way, but you can't always tell. This is just a, I can't remember if this one was from before, or if it was as a part of this new televising, but we have the three spot repairs from the previous that we already knew about before we did this work. Here's the location where a spot repair needs to be done. Severely shattered pipe, it's sticking together for the moment, but you know, it's a, it's an area to be concerned about. There's a spot where there's a piece of missing pipe. Hard to tell exactly what's going on, but obviously susceptible to problems. This is a, this is a belly or a sag. So, ten state standards does give an allowance or a tolerance for sags, and this one is outside of that, we do have a few of those. What happens in those spots is, you know, you don't clean it out for a year, well, you can imagine the gravel and debris that builds up in there. Oh, pretty quick, it's an inch deep, and it's two inches deep, and it's four inches deep, and then those are the problem spots. This is some combination of grease and/or mineral deposits, most likely grease, but you can see the location there. Grant, you know the block of that? Looks like it's just north of City Hall here.
Yep.
That alley. So, in those spots, some, it's already been jetted, so jetting couldn't get it out, so there's something going on. It's not in the inward of the pipe, but you can see it's right along the side, so that spot needs to be addressed. You could try jetting it further with your own stuff, but I don't think it'll do much. Most likely, it's going to take some, some type of repair. This map shows the location of the clay sewer mains that were televised. The little red dots on the map show the locations of the spot repairs. This block was probably the worst block. I'm not sure exactly how many spot repairs, but you get to a point where it's, it's in bad enough shape, and it's really hard to distinguish between spot repairs and lining versus actually digging it up. The costs get to be pretty close to each other, and moving on, I'm talking about lining just in a second here, but addressing old sewer mains. When to do it is the biggest, is the million dollar question. You know, do you, do you do it when you're not having problems, or do you wait and do it when you're having problems? Right? And so, there's two big things that cities do. You know, you can dig up and replace sewer mains, which is big environmental footprint, lots of street reconstruction costs. Used to be the only thing you could do, but most cities nowadays are doing cure-in-place lining, which means they just go into a manhole, run a, run a sock, what do you call it? We call it a resin-impregnated sock, and they blow it up and cure it with heat or steam, and that for all the pipe inside the old pipe. Takes care of problems, a lot of cities are doing that with their old clay pipes. Generally, your system is in fair condition. You don't have to do this right now. You guys have to get a copy of the tapes in the manhole, so. A lot of cities we go to are having horrible problems, their lift stations are running 10, 15, 20 hours a day because of the infiltration problems. You really see that in your system. So, we have a good assessment of your system. I'll just kind of show you, again, our deliverable to the health department is a facility plan, and we need to give them these options or how to address these problems. It's your decision when you want to do them. You can do them now, you can wait 10 years, or you can wait 50 years. The problems will continue to grow until you address things. I mean, at a minimum, you should address your spot repairs. It's your decision whether you want to, you know, take that a step further. So, I'll just kind of go through costs. All right, so, this would be the big, this were 30 years ago, and sewer replacement were the only option. Maybe about $6 million to replace all your clay sewer mains in town. We can't, we can get a grant, let or grant to do water main replacement, and we can't get a grant to do sewer main replacement through Hazen, you guys don't qualify for it. You may get lucky and get a little grant money annually from the health department, but as of right now, your project hasn't scored very high, and with these results, I don't think it's going to score very high.
So, it's not in bad enough shape to qualify for grant money? Is that the stipulation, or?
So, every year, probably, you know, 100 cities submit one or two projects to the health department to get on the SRF priority list.
Okay.
And your project's not near the top.
Okay.
The people that have the serious urgent needs usually are at the top. One city we work in has a malfunctioning wastewater treatment plant, and they have violations continuously, and they're at the top, so.
So, you talk to, when you say grants, is that just with the state, or is that also like USDA role development and some of their criteria?
The big sewer and water type loaning grants, options, Hazen doesn't qualify for USDA because of median household income.
Okay.
But that would be an ideal funding source to use for this. If you did qualify, you'd expect to get about a 45% grant and a 55% loan.
Yeah, that's the one I've been working with, working with Dodge, is their project.
Yeah, yeah. You guys are too rich, so. Because that, right now, like I said, when it comes to water things, the state water commission, we can get a 60% grant to do water projects, but not on the sewer side. And maybe someday they will implement a sewer program with the state. There's some long shot grants out there that you could apply for. I don't know that it's worth it, I mean, if you start having some issues, we could, but based on your income, you're not going to score very high on those anyways, so I don't, I don't know that it's worth it. Anyways, I'm not suggesting you do sewer replacement job right now, but if you did, it'd be about 20 bucks a month per resident. That's, that's how much it would take raising rates throughout town in order to generate enough money to repay the loan on the $6 million project. Okay, so then, cure-in-place lining, when you do decide to address this, I think a cure-in-place lining project would be an appropriate fix. Cure-in-place lining is not as good as replacement because you, you're basically forming a pipe inside the old pipe. So, if you have areas that you have to jet a lot because they maybe do this, it's going to be better, but it's not going to be perfect. When you do full sewer replacement, it will be perfect. It's just you have to live with some, some of the ups and downs, but I'll tell you, it is, is a very good project, or it's a, it's a really good product, it's just not perfect, like brand-new PVC, but it's a lot cheaper, too, so. If Hazen were to go about a project to line all the clay sewer mains in town, it would cost about 1.45 million, and that includes the spot repairs, the protruding taps, the, you know, all the other stuff. Within the facility plan, we've got the full breakdown of the cost estimate that it takes to do all these things. That, you know, because it's, and I just try to do this, I try to relate it to per-user costs, you can kind of put it perspective. If you had to borrow the money, if you had to pay for it over 20 or 30 years, it would cost residents about $5.35 a month. Now, you guys also, you know, at some point probably will have some puried out money or something else coming in in the future that maybe you wouldn't have to raise rates as much or at all, or maybe you wouldn't even like to do it, that would maybe be a special assessment type project, but that's what you're, that is the lesser of the two evils. I will say that, again, your system's in pretty good shape, and that's good because it gives you, a cure-in-place lining would be an option. And I'll just tell you, like I said, it's a million dollar question, when do you do it? If you wait 20 years, if you do wait 20 years, I guarantee you'll have more spot repairs, but maybe it won't deteriorate much. I can't make that decision for you guys, I just want to make sure. It's remaining on your capital improvement plan list, the next slide. Okay, sorry. Study is almost done. I don't think we need a public meeting as per the health department, no, okay, good. And then if you decide to pursue something, it takes six to 12 months to get the funding and design and construction, oh yeah, there's a bunch of cities doing this type of work across the region. You guys are doing manholes right now, like a few at a time. The manholes are in this project also, so, I didn't count them, was there 65 manholes? Is there a story?
Yeah, maybe there's 70.
Okay, so, it kind of summarizes the sewer work you have remaining to do. If you do three manholes a year, it's going to take a long time to get them all done, but you could. So, the reason I'm mentioning is that this remains pretty high, I think, on your capital improvement plan list that we put together in January. I think we, at the time, we left it at number six on the list, there's a few other items, mowing proved that, you know, have to be on the list, but I will also mention there's a few other sewer-related items, too. When you decide to do a sewer project, you try to get sewer-related stuff done, you know, lift station control panels are on your, your pretty high needed list, I know everybody knows that, and there is some cast iron enforcement on one of the lift stations, those generators, I know we're trying to wait for a grant from the FEMA people on the generators, but if you do decide to plan for a sewer project, might be appropriate to consider these other items at the same time, or, or a timeout, but when the streets are going to be opened up, and your, your streets are good right now, they're probably, like we, 2028, I think, is on the list for, and they should probably be patched and chip sealed again, might be an appropriate time to consider doing some of these sewer improvements, too. But again, I can't tell you that, can't tell you if those problem areas are going to last that long, or if they're not. I do think we should address the problem areas and get those done, you know, probably next year. Again, the facility plans are deliverable to you, you guys can read it, and then we owe it to the health departments when that's done, so. Any questions?
Yeah. So, as, as I would have expected, several of us interfaced with the organization that was out here, cleaning the lines, doing some of the spot repairs and stuff as they were going through televising, and they have submitted then to the city a, an ongoing maintenance program where they would come in, and they, they did it several different approaches as to how they would balance out how much work they did per year to maybe optimize the city spend and stuff like that. Did you guys receive a copy of that at all from us?
I don't believe so.
So, my question to you is, thoughts from an engineering standpoint, based upon what you've experienced looking at these, these videos and stuff like that, is it money well spent for, for the city of Hazen to entertain something like that, or, or do we, based upon the, what you've seen here, we say, eh, maybe in about seven years or eight years, we would want to do a repeat? So, polish your crystal ball.
I know, that's what's hard. It's old infrastructure. Sure. It's like, it's like gas bearing water main, when's it going to break? We know it's going to break, but we don't know when, and we can replace... And we can replace this block, but then the rigs are going to happen somewhere else. I, I can look at it with you guys. I think it's, I mean, from my perspective, getting rid of the clay is, you know, pretty high up on the list of things to do. You now know what it looks like and you didn't pay anything to have it done. So, this is a pretty valuable report, in my opinion. But I'll look at the, the plan with you. And if they have some sweet deal where they'll help you get rid of it over a decade, that would be great.
I think their plan was what, they would, they would camera the certain areas of town over a five year span. They'd cover the entire town. Just to keep, just kind of a diagnostic of what's happening.
And I'd like, I'd like to make an educated decision and recommendation to, to the city for that. And of course, my phone rings, you know, about once every week and a half from them asking if, if we've done anything or considered it or anything like that. Which is fine. I can feel phone calls and stuff like that. But I'd like, I'd like a more educated approach to it than Pam, the commissioner, who is electrical on background.
Well, too, you know, I guess all that work was done on these lines. I mean, I mean, it's back in the next seventeen, you know, or something. And I guess we're just seeing just a little bit of change, you know, in the lines.
And I think we did some of the lines, I don't know if that we repeated some of the lines that we did in twenty seventeen or if we did the balance of that.
So, I think we did every clay tile line. And all the bad areas at that time were them.
Okay.
So, you got about ten spot repairs. It says that.
And now, now their approach to us is saying citywide. And, and so that begs the question, do we continue to maybe just focus on the clay tile in lieu of replacement at this time? Because it's a huge chunk of money. Or, or do we, you know, with all that PVC stuff, maybe that's something to concern yourself with also just from a preventive maintenance standpoint?
From a preventative maintenance standpoint, you should be cleaning all of your sewer mains. That's, and I think the guys do that. Do you guys do jetting anymore or don't you? Reactive jetting, I would say.
Reaction jetting.
Fair. Yeah, but televising, we generally don't see a lot of problems with PVC pipe. You can have problems, you know, it does happen. But almost a hundred percent of it, of the problems are in the clay sewer mains. I guess you have to decide if it's worth it or not. So, yeah, let's just say that there's ten spot repairs since two thousand seventeen. I don't know what the spot repairs, if we had to dig them all up, it'd be super expensive. But I think some of these can be done trenchless, which is a really big benefit. And then beyond that, I mean, if you do lining, you should do more than one block at a time, obviously. You know, if you can, if you can stomach it and budget for it and maybe get some period out money or I didn't know, I mentioned that a couple of times. But there's something like that where you can do ten, fifteen blocks at a, at a time and get some substantial amounts done. You could have this done, you know, before you know it. It doesn't have to be one point five million dollars all at once. You can do a couple three hundred thousand dollar projects, take big chunks of it. That's all I got.
Here, a quick question back to the water project. Was there going to be a gate installed still? I'm going up our maintenance road, went up to the tower there at the curve by Murray Snyder's.
Can't remember.
Were you putting a gate there to keep people off that road?
I think we're gonna do it ourselves.
Or we do it ourselves, that's right. Because it was, the price was pretty high.
Yeah, that's right. Hold the ground for a little while.
Alright.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Alright, moving on to six A, Heritage Park. We have Lauren and Mike. You're up.
I'll go first so I can sit down. You guys are so sour, I have to tell you something really right. I just came from the junior league's in baseball tournaments. And Hazen pulled that game out on the bottom of the inning, so they go into the championship game. And I see it was great, three to two. So, we would like to make a short presentation. Lauren's probably got a little bit more information. I've got a question or a thought that I would like to throw out. We have kind of realized that we hugely appreciate this heritage park. And think that that can be a premier and focal point for Hazen. And there's just a couple of little things that we'd like to correct over time. And the one question I have of you is we would like to replace those wooden benches. Now, they've been lasting and they've been working. We've altered a little bit to drop the height down. They're very heavy. They're a pain in the butt. And down, they won't last that long. So, down the road, we would like to put in metal benches. And they would be metal benches from the Premier Polysteal, which is the provider of the cables and such that the city or Parks and Rec have purchased. We've kind of thought about how we might go about that, whether we would like to make an effort to have memorial benches so that patrons could take it upon themselves to dedicate the bench or so. And so, we are going to approach that during our chalk fest. The problem that we, and it's not huge, but we did run into, it's such a long lead time, we are not going to be able to have an example, special. But I think we're still going to try and make an effort. And hopefully, you know, it, it could be something Parks and Rec might like to donate a bench. City of Hazen might donate a bench. My wife and I are going to donate a bench. We think that is the route to go and it would last a long time. And then we can move on to the next little eyesore in Heritage Park. And we've got some great plans. We take a lot of pride in that. So, I'm throwing that out and if you have any problems with that, please let us know if you have something that would interfere with your thinking process. Right now, there are nine wooden benches and we'd like to have ten or twelve metal benches. Six foot, freestanding, so that they could be moved. They're dipped. They should last a long time. And you can look at those benches up and down Main Street.
With backs on them, I'm assuming?
Yes. And a fifteen inch bench versus a twelve. So, they should perforated steel versus expanded. So, they're a nice enough, one hundred and thirty pounds for a six foot bench. So, I think we're okay with that. We're trusting that people aren't going to walk off of them.
Well, I know you asked if we have an issue with that. And obviously, maybe not everybody knows of. We, those are donated by a private person, citizen in the community. So, it's not like it's, you're getting rid of our bench, benches. It's not our, it's not our money. So, I don't think we have an issue with that at all, Mike. I think it'd be a nice addition over there.
Keep going, people. But it is your park.
Right.
You know, we have to remind ourselves of that again and again, that we're kind of invading on your.
You're improving it.
And so, with that, Lauren's got some things she'd like to throw out.
Yeah, just wanted to talk to you. We have our third annual chalk fest coming up. On August. We can have our breakfast, some meal for everyone should be can. We'll, we'll get more details with Alibi. You'll be invited to a breakfast on August sixteen at eight thirty. But so, this is just kind of a general information poster. Here is schedule. There'll be a couple of changes. But if you put this on your fridge with some.
Are you surprised that the bison has lasted as long and upheld as well as it has?
It'll last.
I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, I didn't know if it, you know, how the winter treat that thing.
Well, if it faces the right direction or.
Sounds like it.
Anyway, so just, this is general information about the chalk fest. So, a couple of things that we'll be looking for from the city and then we'll get back to you again. We'll be closer. But we'll be serving alcohol, canned beer. And last year, we used Delmark. And Pat, we're cops. They did a great job.
Less copying, more serving.
And, and, you know, always if you people have a beer, you know, it's not a wedding dinner sort of thing. It's just kind of a convenience or something nice to do for a few people. So, we'll, we'll have cops and we will leave barricades again. And then we will also add for the street closure, uh, starting July the fifteenth. And then until the morning of the.
And a possible cleaning.
Yeah, of street cleaning.
We did that last year.
We did that last year as well. Before I had the morning, oh, I think we did that.
The chalk guys were like, they, that's the cleanest street they ever worked on.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot that. Anything else?
No, we're going to come back before to make sure that we go to.
General PKL.
I've got it.
Mike, do you have an idea on those, those benches on cost?
Yes, they're about eight hundred and twenty dollars a piece. And the shipping is sky high, so we intend to drive to Iowa to pick those benches up. Five hundred dollars a piece for shipping. Can you believe it? So, ten benches, it takes two clever. It'll be a good road trip.
Well, thanks. It's, it's a fabulous event. I appreciate you guys putting your.
Well, here's, well, one little bit. We had a group last year who entered the national competition and took first. And so, they are going to be on our scale. I don't think we'll be able to get them again.
We won't be able to afford them again. There's seven o'clock on Thursday. They're called the Waddington Brothers. And they are the national bluegrass champs.
And last summer, we had them there in the afternoon, weren't they?
No, they will be here at like five or six. And they all plan out and.
We've got some great entertainment.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate them, folks. Alright, moving down eight A, commercial building print, remodel and update at the hub.
Basically, they want to add to their Diesel Island.
Yeah, you're good.
Take advantage of some of the traffic around here. They have this stuff as far as their tanking from O V. I'm not sure. I wasn't able to get a hold of Jared this morning to visit with him about who's, who their contractors are going to be as far as their concrete work and all of that stuff, but.
No variance of sun.
No variance is needed for this?
So, those three on the bottom right by their, their island?
That's the tanks.
That's the, that's the service tanks, okay.
I guess that shows the new lines that are going to be put in for the tanks.
So, they're going to have an island with three sets of pumps on, one, two, three?
Basically, I'm sure you'll be able to pull it here, here.
So, there, there are traffic down. We'll go down that, that lake pass there. Come back in from the west.
Well, it seems like that's not a perfect situation, but that's not, not a problem.
And they're taking away their own parking over there on the south side to, to do this.
So, this is informational, correct?
They are requesting approval and then they're, they're estimating cost and it depends on how that.
Motion to approve the program?
Motion by Lederich? Second by Stern. Discussion. Go call.
Lederich. Hi. Stern?
Hi.
Hiller?
Hi.
Paul, what else?
Hi. Motion carried.
Okay, moving down to reports. Water sewer.
I have nothing to share with you.
Okay, Jason's not here for streets. Dave, anything?
No, not really.
Yeah, the mowers are all running well and.
Still waiting for.
That one?
One that's all together. I'll be working out at the beginning on Wednesday and hopefully getting with some information. Going to do a little bit of painting this summer, like to freshen up some of the crosswalks or whatever. Nothing, nothing major. Little striping is looking pretty good with the deep crosswalk. That probably need to be directed out.
Streetsweeper running okay?
Yes, they're working good.
Casey, finance, busting, library.
So, the library's been, I guess, raising, raising some, I guess, money. Money, I guess, to. You know, to change all the, I guess, the windows in the library and stuff. That's been going well. So, I guess that's all I have.
Dustin, police, fire, forestry?
Uh, nothing for fire or forestry as of right now. But I did contact Red Rock Ford. It was on their call list in case we could order police vehicles. Well, they told me they could order an expedition. But once they actually started digging into it, Ford and Don Martin makes the expedition police vehicle. Only the Explorer or the pickup, which I don't know that either one of them will work for us. But the guy's like, well, he could also deal in Dodge because he's got a Dodge dealer too. So, he did get me a quote. This would have been for a twenty-three that they sold to McKenzie County last year. And he's working on a twenty-four, which he did say will open up next week where he'll be able to place the order. Last year's price upfitted like this was forty-seven thousand. He figured, um, figured for the twenty-four model, it'd be either forty-eight or forty-nine. So, he's estimating, he was hoping to get me that before the meeting, but didn't quite make it. Did call us over to Hazen Motors today. Steve was out. He won't be back until middle of next week. Heath thought in June, GM would open up their fleet stuff. And we haven't heard from him at all. Rod didn't, didn't know and Barb didn't know anything about the fleet stuff. So, I don't know if we're going to go down that avenue or keep waiting.
The only, the input we got from the police, Dustin had a meeting with the police staff last week. And they would rather stay with the tub. It's a little bit bigger versus the vehicle you have from the county. And this, this Dodge would also be a little smaller than the Chevy vehicle as well.
I mean, we can keep waiting. Both of our vehicles seem to be running pretty good right now. We've been waiting for two years already for GM to open it up to. How long it is, they just keep kicking the can down the road.
Was there any contact with that other one that you've gotten from last year?
Oh, I have not contacted. I can try again. Yeah.
Like Texas?
Yeah, I was down in Texas and they were willing to sell the vehicle to Hazen Motors. And we technically buy it from Hazen Motors. So, we can, we can add that avenue too if you can. I'll ask that question. Yep, that's all I got right now for police.
Okay, thank you. Lester's not here. The only other my report is I'm going to just, there's a couple of touchups on, on this building I want to have done. Monty's office, we did have a, oh, it might be about a month ago now. It's kind of flooded and the gals kept her pretty clean. So, the carpenter is bad. I want to get a quote on the carpenter in his office. Try to fix that up. And he's got a window as well on the south side that has been bowing a little bit. And you could tell the seal has been pulling away from the, the frame. So, I want to get some numbers on that. And then this window frame outside, the one over here off of Dave's office there, the paint's peeling. Those looking pretty shabby. So, I just want, and those on the back of the building with the other blocks, the concrete block, the paint's peeling pretty good too. On the lower, on the lower three, four feet, probably from stone and everything else. But I think we just need to put a little bit of money into this building, shape it up a little bit, so. little bit, so. I'm sure that's going to probably exceed my allowance that I, so I'll up and bring to you guys for approval, but we'll get some more numbers on that. All right, moving down to 11 A Old Business Police Department Air Conditioning Unit Vote.
So we did get two quotes. Legener did get us in the second quote. Legener did bid at two ways. It'd be a complete replacement of everything. So that'd be the air handle and the air conditioning units.
And the furnace.
Well, yeah, and the furnace and it would be a heat pump system. I have no idea how old the air handle there is in there. I couldn't tell you. They quoted us 13,900 for that. Or just replacing the air conditioner unit and the A coil would be 8,465. And then the M and A heating bid came back at 6,800 for the same. So that'd be the complete air conditioner unit and the A coil. So it'd be a difference of 1,665. So I'd like to make a motion to go with the M and A heating.
Okay. Motion by Weider to go with the M and A heating for 6,800 for just the air conditioner. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion.
Is the, is it the same in terms of electrical, electrical cost is not associated or covered in both quotes?
Yeah. I don't believe it is.
I didn't see it there. And even though we don't know how old the heat pump and the furnace are in that building, maybe we just make sure we get it cleaned and looked at really well this fall before we get that going.
Yeah, it did not include the electric, does state that down here.
It did not include an electric.
It did include a cleaning of the old air handler and the M and A heating, which he didn't exactly say that in the M and A heating.
So then the furnace, I guess that's in there now. I guess is that, I guess, the propane?
Yeah.
I think they're pumping back to the alley.
No, I want to say.
Oh, it's electric. Give the motion and second, you have a discussion. Go call.
Weider.
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Hiller?
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, 12 A, we have nothing on any business. 13 Public Comment. Kenny, you're up.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, I'd gone on your agenda two weeks ago and I got busy and I spaced it out, didn't make it here. I just wanted to visit about the nuisance weeds and I, you maybe saw the photos I took? And yes, along the railroad right away, some neighbors to the railroad take care of the railroad weeds and some don't. And, you know, they, I read the ordinance, I read through it on nuisance and it's quite a deal when you think it's greater than six inches, they need to be attended to. Well, it's, it's pretty hard for anybody to really have a railroad attend to their property when vegetation is six inches or greater. I don't know what can be done about that because they haven't sprayed back there for a number of years now. The railroad has not. And it gets to be a problem. Right now, the kosher weeds are about six to six and a half feet tall. And they're going to go to seed shortly. Now, if the railroad, let's say, is contacted and they do agree to come and spray, I don't know when they'll get here because after contact, they have 20 days to abate their nuisance. And then the city is to take care of it.
So Tammy did get a call back on Friday, I believe. She said they're going to do it this week. We'll see if that happens.
Just to, my concern is that now those six and a half foot high kosher weeds are going to go to seed and they'll blow all over the community and.
Well, I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have any. I don't know if we have any recourse to get all the county weed board and have, maybe they'll have, they'd have more luck getting, putting pressure on Burlington Northern, which I doubt, but we, as you know the budget we have, we can't spray the entire length of the community on the railroad tracks that just have bored that. So I don't know what option we really have.
Well, according to ordinance, you can put it against the property tax on the railroad. But how you're going to do that?
Well, we'd have to pay, we'd have to pay for it upfront.
Upfront, absolutely. And then you have to wait eight months to get any payment.
Or eight years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Or never.
Or never.
I, I did talk to the county weed board individual and he said that on their part, they wouldn't be spraying them because it's in the city limits. But other than that, I, I don't, I don't know. It's just a concern that, so it gets resolved, let's say this year. I don't know what's going to happen and you folks don't know what's going to happen next year because it's, it seems like it's a repeat problem.
What happened last year?
My wife went back there and sprayed a lot of weeds and pulled a lot and she's really tired of it.
I'm sure she is. I would be too.
I don't want to send her down, so.
No. No, but the length of the, you know, the whole, all those houses up on your block there, did everybody do the same or, or is it like this summer where there's patches of?
There's patches. Tom Berry has taken off, it's upon himself that he sprays a great length of that area behind his property, but he said he's getting a little tired of spending money.
I'm sure. I would too.
For the weeds on the railroad property.
I would too.
And so, yeah, there are some of the neighbors say, well, yeah, I don't like the weeds, but it's not my property.
Right.
So they stay off it. They stay off it for weed purposes.
Right, right. They drive on their property at their convenience though.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Yeah, I don't know what our, what we can do, you know, it doesn't help to cut them down. First of all, you can't mow that, that rock. Yeah, we don't have, yeah. Some of those stocks are probably.
They were out.
Or, yeah. So I don't, I'm not sure what the heck we could do. But Tammy did get a call Friday. They contacted her, so we'll see what, see if they're going to get after it like they said they would. Well, I don't know. We'll watch it. Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, moving down to approve the bills.
I got one more thing under public comments just yesterday. First, County Water Resource Board is going to be running another round of drilling flights over the river through saving, just looking for high rolling ways after the flooding, kind of get a picture of, we saw what the flood looked like this spring. We've got that for our records as to where at certain levels the community would be impacted. Now we're just looking at now in the aftermath, is there any areas that maybe aren't readily apparent that could be looking at some impacting some infrastructure and stuff like that? And I imagine they're going to come through in the next 10 days or so, once the river gets to where they think, where they're comfortable as far as the level it's at.
Mark, do they fly over the ML Creek too to look at snagging projects? Because there's a lot of downed trees in there.
Yeah, and I'll make sure we get that stuff to you guys that, and if there's any proposals that can come out of that, we'll certainly keep you on the block there.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anything else? All right, approve the bills.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Hiller, second by Weider. Go call.
Hiller?
Aye.
Weider?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Before we adjourn, just taking a good look at what Monty gave us for numbers for looking at payroll calculation estimates for, for next year. We need to pick a date so we can sit down and go line by line over the budget for this fall. And Monty, we have to have that in by August, what, 10th, you said?
August 10th, it has to be, the county's approval of an area.
Okay. All right, and in saying that, I think Monty is, did you see that COLA is going up 3.6, 5, 6%?
That's what was talked about here, yeah.
Okay. So food's out when you start to digest this a little bit?
So the, so then I guess, so I guess, so then I guess, on that COLA, is that, I guess, medical? Is that like?
No, I haven't. And I haven't got the numbers on the medical.
Oh, okay.
That's just the.
That's the possible.
Superbrazin, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that's just an acid.
Yeah, I see. Could be 3%, could be 4%.
But that's certainly something for us to think about as well.
Okay, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.